...to July. When he would've got the 2% anyway. That wasn't anything that we agreed to, it's just something that we typically do.
Is that the same way as Frank, too? Didn't you do something with his contract to say that after a six-month period that you would give an additional 2%?
No, not additional, the 2% will be what we had.
Have the same thing as what this-
This is what everybody else would-
2%.
He's gonna wait six months to get his July 2%.
Okay. I didn't see any police officers on here.
Well, police officer contracted.
Okay. Except for the-
None.
The Chiefs is already, that guy's approved last time. And this is everybody else on here.
And the new lieutenant, which we're gonna discuss. So that's, I asked Leslie why the two other police people weren't on there. It just seems, you know, but-
We're doing those separately because of the way that's switched around.
Yeah, and it's fine. You're, uh, just so that you know, Mr. Gifford, your, um, letter and explanation on this is the reason I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this. I originally was gonna argue a little bit about the extra 2% or at least 1% of it. I feel like we had, uh, started chief at a higher rate already because of his intelligence and schooling and training, and so he started a rate pretty high when we originally hired him, higher than we thought maybe he was gonna have to pay somebody. So, I kinda thought I might argue a little bit about this, but I've decided not to. And, and your explanation on here about, about what he can do with that experience and education he has, and the money he's saved us on having to hire extra engineering firms and stuff, totally justifies it for me, and so I really don't have any problem with it.
And I was gonna have the same problem with it, you know, because we did give him vacation extra this year, but that, I assume that you already, you already said you had that in there, so I wasn't gonna argue about it after that. So, um, what you wrote, uh, I just felt that I'd probably go along with it the same, uh, which is probably surprising to you at that time, but it's just the idea that what you said and what you stated, and I think you already promised him in somewhat way. So, I think that if, uh, in the future, work sessions and that, if you promise, um, things, you know, make sure that you tell us and that you're gonna do it, and, uh, so we don't get surprised once in a while.
Somebody like to make a motion on this solitary resolution?
I'll make- Go ahead.
I, I just had another question, 'cause Dan, I had emailed you earlier about that we were going to do two separate, but one for the, 'cause it looks like these are all together.
There's a separate resolution for the fire people. They're in your packets, they're supposed to be.
Doesn't really read that way.
It, I know, but it, it kind of all runs together, and it looks like-
Oh, two different resolution numbers.
Okay.
It just isn't on the, on the, uh, we can, I mean, we can separate them out, we have two different votes.
Okay.
Well, I, I think since it's two separate resolutions, we have to do it separate.
Okay.
They're just not listed on the agenda that way.
Right, they're listed on this agenda under one item, but there's, there's a, a separate resolution for the fire people.
I, I guess my only comment on, on, on all of this, I'm glad everybody's in agreement that he's justified the, the increase that Dan's recommending, but I guess I'll just blow his, toot his horn for, for a minute. Uh, we, we saw the PowerPoint by Mike Stewart last week talking about the changes just in the, uh, Fire Department since he's been on board. My gosh, it's incredible what he's, what he's done down there, and we give him this title of Building Inspector. I had asked Dan here, or a month or so ago, about the, uh, previous person sitting in that office, and, and, and what a difference. Mike's running circles around, uh, the performance of, of our predecessor, who did an adequate job. It, it, we got very fortunate, I think, in, in, in having Mike, uh, apply, uh, to move to this community of ours with, with the, with the experience and, and just the knowledge that, the stuff he's forgotten, most, most guys in his position, whatever. It's gonna be really tough down the, down the road replacing him, and I would hate to set this salary, uh, way up there to where the next guy in would automatically get that salary and not be nearly as, as competent. But, having said that, I'm not sure that we're, that this 4% is even enough to, uh, to justify the good work that he's doing. I hope next year, when we, when we talk about budget, I, I hate seeing Mike out there going out to look at weeds and, and, and I know that we're doing a lot of self-inspections on, uh, on all those, uh, fire inspections, uh, you know, I know from experience that the place that I work, we, we fill the things out, and we're not totally accurate with, with how we answer them. I would rather see, see him going out and being, you know, getting in those buildings, doing the important work, and having some, somebody in that department with him. We, uh, we've really got it going, both those departments, in the right direction, and, and there's only one reason for that, the person that's, that's doing the work, and, we have to pay him a little more to keep him around. He's, he's got a lot of work left to do. Someday down the road, he's gonna be retiring, and we're gonna be looking, looking to replace him, I realize that, but, uh, and Mike, I don't know what kinda salary requirements you're, you're looking for. Is, is that 4%, 4% enough to, to keep you happy?
I've got more employees than anybody in this city under me. I've got 31 firefighters, going to 41. Nobody else has that many. I've got high-dollar rolling stocks sitting up there in the station that we have to maintain and, and use and train on. The certifications are required by the feds now, um, and yet, I'm being paid below the new lieutenant's pay. I don't think that's fair. And I'm running, I'm a department head of two, where everybody else is a department head of one. So-
With, with the 4% raise, you would still be underneath?
I'd only be at 54, right, Leslie?
Okay, you guys had the memo, it'd be 54, 302.
Yeah, and the new, and the lieutenant's gonna be at 56, 57. So I'm the lowest department head, having two department heads on, you know, doing two jobs for two department heads. And I'm working 60 hours a week.
Have you brought that up to Mr. Gifford?
We've talked about it, yeah.
Okay.
But, well, the thing was, and like we've talked, that when I was first hired, you didn't know what you were gonna get.
Nope.
Absolutely.
So you didn't know where to set the salary.
Absolutely.
After 20 months, my track record should show that I should be up in between, somewhere between the lieutenant and the, the police chief, or even up closer to the police chief. 'Cause I'm about the only employee that works 60 hours a week for this city, or higher.
You know, when we started hiring, and we did decide to hire somebody with the three groups in there, which you knew what you were getting into when you were hired.
But I also figured it if I grew myself-
When you knew that you were getting into what you were hired as.
That's right.
Okay? And we hired you directly as a building inspector, and that was the main principle behind it. As the volunteer fire department, is that you take care of the volunteer fire department. You don't have to go to fires, you do go once in a while, you don't get your gear on. You, you told me that the state tells you you don't have to get your gear on, you're an observer, and if you do go, you just make it. And I've seen that.
But you also didn't-
As far as nuisance, you drive around, and you take care of the nuisance at that. I did know that you were really disappointed in your job, and you feel that you're just, uh, way underneath paid compared at being here for a short period of time. I know in Kansas City that you could probably raise property taxes sky-high, uh, to do so, because that's what they probably do out there. We're a small branch in a town with a little bit of retail. We lost, uh, the township at that time, so we have a short area instead of a big area to do that. A lot of spending has been going on. I like to see a lot of cuts in that stuff in there, and I haven't seen it yet. So, as far as what you've been doing, I think you've been doing a good job, and I think your pay's been very good at that time.
Well, I, I think, I think, Rick, I agree. He's been doing a good job, and I would say a great job. And I, I totally agree, uh, that, that his pay scale should be, uh, at least what the police lieutenant, at, at least a dollar above what the police lieutenant would be, and that, an 8% increase in, in wages would cost the city an additional $4,000. I know I was-
Well, you can imagine, though, that those police officers and those chief have been here for a long period of time.
Their, their areas of responsibilities are also important, but that's another question. And, and it's all about opinions. My opinion is that, uh, that the man, Mike Hime, deserves to be paid, uh, I would, I would make a motion that, that we, that we move towards an 8% pay increase.
Motion?
Yes, it is. Yep.
There's a motion with support.
And I'll, I'll just go a little bit further than with, with con, with our conversation with, with Mike. He has done a fantastic job with the Fire Department. We have volunteers coming back, and, and they're educated. They have the training that they didn't have before, that was lacked on many, many, many years, that we, we all weren't aware of it. And I think the, the morale at our Fire Department is, is, is greater now. And I know Mike is looking towards the fu, future, because, quite frankly, we cannot maintain a volunteer fire department through the daytime when all of our volunteers are stuck at their jobs, and getting people to go to a fire on a day shift is few and far between, and he's looking forward down, down the role at that aspect of combining a volunteer-paid fire department. And I'm sure at some point, we're gonna be doing that. Mike has done a tremendous job in the building inspection. Our previous inspector, he did get the, um, inspections going, the rental inspections up and running, and Mike has taken off with that, and then he's just had a tremendous amount of work with Great River Medical Center, because it seems like every day he's got 10, 12 change orders, and to keep all of that in line without us having to hire an engineer to come in and help him is just unbelievable, and it's saved us tons of thousands of dollars. I think 4% is, 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 is just measly at this point. I think he's well-deserving of 8%, and I've talked with Mr. Gifford about that. I have not talked to anybody else, but-
Nope.
Yeah, but I, I wholeheartedly agree with the fellow councilperson.
Well, like I said, I thought Mike did an excellent job for what he's done and everything else, and I think Randy does and everybody else, and I think that's a slap in the face for other people for recommending that.
Any other discussion?
What are you gonna vote on, Hans?
On a motion?
Just that one motion first?
Yeah, on the-
Pay increase, 8% Mike Hime.
Or is that part of the-
Or 2% of the-
The resolution, they include the rest?
That's my point.
Non-union personnel?
Yeah, and then everybody else at 2%.
Pool state, whatever's on there.
Yeah.
The first resolution would include city administrator, police sergeant, fire chief, building inspector, public works director, assistant public works director, finance officer, treasurer, city clerk, planning secretary, IT system administrator, department head secretary, utility bill clerk, administrative assistant finance, administrative assistant police, and police reserves. And the change in that would be, uh, in this resolution, it's, it's a 2%-
It's 2% for all of Mike.
For everybody.
For Mike, if, if you did 8% for Mike, it would be $2,168.89 by weekly. So, I guess that's your proposal, if that's what you're headed to change it.
Uh, what the, is that what you're-
Yeah, and the police reserves stay the same at the dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the pool stays the same. The only, I guess, are you proposing then to approve the resolution with the exception of Mike Hime, and change that amount to 8% increase, so it'd be $2,168.89?
That'd be the easy way to say it, that's-
I would do it that way.
You, you could also separate that out if you wanted to.
I would separate it.
Which is what I think Rod was getting at.
Well, I, I'm yes on some of it, no on some of it.
That's what I thought you were getting at.
And you have one councilperson that I'm not sure how they think they need to vote, because it affects things.
Well, if we're just doing on this part and keeping the other part separate-
You could ask that-
So you think you can vote on the Fire Chief's pay?
You could have three, three different separate-
Yeah, you can, you can vote-
Asking the question. I'm just asking the question, and I know you were trying to stay out of trouble.
Your conflict rises on the next res-
On the next, on the second one.
I don't care, I'm just, I know what you were try, attempting to do, and-
Right.
We know, yeah, your, your conflict is on the second resolution, not on this one. But, we can have a third resolution. It doesn't matter.
I would say go with three.
As I sit here right now, I'm not gonna vote for the 8%, I, I'm willing to vote for what Mr. Gifford suggested we do, and if Mr. Gifford wants to come back in the future because he's done an appraisal on Mike and, and recommend higher wages, that's fine, but I, I'm not sitting here tonight prepared to do that when, when the guy's boss only recommended a 4% increase. I, I'm not willing to jump it up to eight, sitting here tonight. And I, I've never said that Mike hasn't done a great and fantastic job, it still is just the fact that, uh, I can't tell you the last time we gave out an 8% increase, and we have many long-term employees that are great employees also, do a great job, and, and I just, I don't think I'm sitting here tonight prepared to argue whether, how he ought to be paid as compared to the chief of police and lieutenant, 'cause, quite frankly, I've never participated in any of that discussion ever. I'm willing to, but, but not to sit here tonight and just vote for it.
And this is why we have those work sessions and talk about it, and that's what actually Rod's getting at.
I just-
I would make a motion to-
I got a motion, I got a motion with support here to begin with.
Yep.
So I'll make another one, um. All right, Dan, it's your motion.
Well-
Your support, Trace. Do you wanna just make that motion for the Fire Chief Building Inspector?
Yes.
Okay. That's how we'll do that. So it'll be a third resolution. Incur with that?
Yes.
So read what the first is, please, Mary.
Well, the motion, the motion is to, uh, uh, set the Fire Chief Building Inspection, Inspector's, uh, salary to, what'd you say, $2,061?
$2,168.89.
$2,000- What?
$2,168.89 by weekly.
$2,168.89 by weekly. For fiscal year 12/13. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
No.
Raleigh?
No.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Now, the next resolution is to set the salary and benefits for non-union personnel, which you strike off the fire, exclude the Fire Chief Building Inspector in there, at the recommended rate of 2%.
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion?
And the pool.
Yeah, the, whatever's on there. I'm, my, my screen doesn't go up like that far.
You're losing your hair.
I haven't scrolled down that far yet.
We're approving that as presented to us with no changes.
Yeah. Right. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Motion carrying.
Aye. Since I made the motion, I, I gotta get to vote.
I was getting there.
Do you wanna take a break, Mary?
No. Hearing's not that bad yet, but these people from down there have to start speaking up.
For both ends.
One has to slow down, the other one has to speak up. All right, now, we're at the resolution to set the firefighter pays.
Well, I guess I feel compelled to ask a question now, only because I feel a little blindsided on something that just went on, and not real happy about it, but that's okay. Chief, do these things meet your approval? I mean, and I don't mean that smartly, I'm just like, I don't know now, I got this stuff from Gifford, and I thought it was all okay, and everybody was happy, but, and we weren't, but, so now, are these pay things for these firemen? I mean, like, did you participate in that, and is that what you want?
2% across the board, I have no issue with.
Okay.
For the guys.
I, I'm being very serious about that.
And so am I. Next year, I think we need to discuss it, because we have pool employees making more than firefighters going in and saving lives and things, at eight and a half and $9 an hour part-time, when we have guys that have more certification, more training, and things that we need to really look at it next year, or the next year, of bringing the pay up for the guys, that, if the pool gets in trouble, who they're gonna call? Us and the ambulance out of Burlington. And, uh, their EMTs, their paramedics, the pool people are standard first aid. And you've got, uh, the, the balance here is not right. But the 2% this year, that's what we budgeted for, I don't have an issue with, but, when we go to budget times next year, even if I have to cut some equipment, I'm going to bat for the personnel, because they, they've got through their trainings, they're miles ahead of where they were when I came here, the equipment's miles ahead, we're still finding some issues in maintenance and things that we're addressing, but, you know.
And understand whether I agree or disagree with you, that's exactly what I want you to do. I, I want you to bring those things up so that-
Oh, yeah. And I'm willing, and I'm willing to lose some-
So that we at least know one way or the other.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, but when, when we were talking about last year's budget and everything, I was still trying to get my feet on the ground.
Okay, well, and granted.
You know, and that's why I didn't, I didn't pursue so much on this year, 'cause we're, we were drastically needing equipment in some areas, we still are drastically needing equipment in areas, uh, but, when the budget rolls around next time, even if I have to cut some things, I'll cut them to get the personnel some more money. Absolutely.
So, who wants to make a motion?
What'd you ask?
I need a motion for this resolution.
Oh, for the 2% for the firefighters?
Yeah.
Oh, so moved.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stewart?
Abstain.
Lees?
Aye.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carrying. All right, now, item number 10 is to consider proposal for the annual audit. We only received one proposal, and that's from CPA Associates, or, well, I guess it's a three-year contract, a proposal for three years, at, uh, $8,900 this year, $9,300 next year, and $9,800 the following year.
And how's that compared to what we were paying them?
Paid $9,500, I mean, $8,500 for-
Last year we paid 85?
Yeah.
And any input on why the other, uh, people didn't provide any proposals?
I'm surprised, I kinda thought maybe the state auditor's office would at least, um, try to go for it, but I don't know, because they've got some new regulations coming down, that they have to do small-city examinations now, that maybe they think it should put on staff, so I kinda, it's just that was, you know, thought maybe that was good, but I kinda thought maybe they would bid on it, but-
They have been bidding on, when other cities around here have put some up, the state has been bidding on those in the past. I think it probably is because the legislature put that new, because on the really small cities, didn't ever have to have an audit, and now the state has been ordered by the legislature to go in and do those every so often. It's not a full audit, but their staff is gonna be busy, and that's probably why they didn't do it. They usually end up higher than your local people, but, once in a while, they're not.
So what do you want us to do here?
They've been audit.
Three years, I mean, we put it out for three years. We have to have an audit, it's mandatory.
Are we doing any special federal audits?
We're real close on that, I have to get over $500,000 federal funds, you have to do that special single audit. It looks like, I won't know until the end of the year, we get here, but it looks like we probably will, but we're real close.
That's usually, what, a couple thousand?
Well, he says in his proposal, he could be up to $5,000 for that special audit, depending on the, depending on the, uh, complexity of the number.
Don't cash those federal checks in the next couple weeks.
In case we qualify, they come here and they find out that we did exceed the $500,000, and we would have to have that single audit.
It's a pleasure.
No, we gotta do it, I'd make that motion.
Looking for the name of the people, but-
Support.
Motion with support to, uh, let CPA Associates do the audit for the next three years.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
West?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number 11 is to consider proposal to purchase Summit Software. Do you wanna just sit down up here and explain this?
I thought I was cool over here at Randy's, how's that?
Okay.
We hadn't budgeted for this year, but we've been having some issues with their software, and we, we've heard Data Tech also called Summit, it's been in the state of Iowa for several years now, and they've really grown and expanded, and they're geared toward Iowa. And our software support maintenance has gotten so expensive, this year, it's gonna be $14,190, next year, they're projecting $15,012, just for the maintenance of the software, and it, it's not user-friendly. We did a demo, Katie, Kelly, Mike, Carla, and myself sat down and did a demo with the Summit Software, it was several hours long, it was quite extensive, and we were really impressed about how the programs are more user-friendly, you could generate reports better, it was, it was easier and quicker to put information in. And that, the software support for the Summit is $5,460 compared to the $14,190 annual fee, and it's got, the Summit Software, or Da, or Data Technology also called, it has in-state training. So, we were proposing, after four years, you would have a payback of the initial costs, and then after that, you'd have a savings of, estimated to be $13,224 annual.
So let's start with that, a payback in four years, and from then on, 13 grand in savings.
Savings, yes.
Plus, in your opinion, and Dan's used this before and likes it, easier to use?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like a win-win-win.
We think it, it's great software.
You're gonna pay, you're gonna pay for this, what, building permit, $10,000?
Yeah, one of the, one of the modules is building permits, and, and Mike seemed pretty impressed with the software, too, I mean, you're not very happy with the software we have now.
Building permits, is that out of the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, if I do something, I could also screw up utility building and everything else, if, if, it's not a separate, right now, it's not separate from utility buildings and those kinda things. So if I do something in buildings, or rentals, or something like that, it's gonna go clear through the system where it needs to be separated, so I can't get into the billing part of the city. And right now, Ncode won't do it, if I do, if I do one thing wrong, it affects everything. And the good thing I like about it is, is it, I'm separate from the utility buildings and all that stuff, that if, if ownership or something changes, that, or the renter changes, or whatever happens, uh, I can make those corrections and, and go from there.
And the reports, Jen, I had, I- And the reports, Jen, I had, I passed you out some reports. This, I mean, you can click so much better on the reports of what to put on your report. Like, this is a claims list as compared to this, that you guys get now. You know, just, it's simple, easy to read.
How come we didn't use these people before now?
Well, I, one of the...
Your note says they've been around for twenty-seven years.
Yes, I know, they've really grown in the last several years. It used to be they had one person that did a lot of their software support when they were smaller, and there was concerns about what happened to this one person, you know? But they've really expanded and, and they've really, uh, expanded their employees.
So are they buying business?
No, no, they're just getting cities. They're getting cities.
Are they buying it? And, and soon they'll be just like Tyler?
Hopefully not.
I just asked...
They're more Iowa-generated, they're more Iowa, uh, they, they do the Iowa reporting, they, they see what the needs are for Iowa. Tyler's, is too big, it's nationwide, they, they're concerned with all these other states.
When we picked Tyler, and that was told by you people to us that that was the way to go?
Yes, that's what we thought at the time, yes.
That was just, that was a gradual from what we'd always been on. From when I was, when I was started twenty years ago, we had, we had CMS.
Yeah.
Well, CMS got bought out by Ncode. Tyler bought out in CMS, you know, Ncode. So it's just kind of, the companies have evolved.
Leslie, I'm, one thing I'm not sure on, we have to be covered by both companies for a year or something?
A short ti- yeah, about a year, until we get the tran- get all the way over into the Datatech, if you guys choose to go to it.
Are those numbers reflected in, in your...
My spreadsheet?
Yeah.
I don't see anything saying anything here that we have to be covered by two of them for a year.
It's at the bottom, I think, then it's not for a year, the way I read, uh, several months.
Well, it would be six months you get duplicative coverage because...
They'd start in about four months, and then along after...
Yeah, after four months, and they would start to, they do each module, they do one module at a time. They do the financials, and then they go to payroll, and then they do the utility billing, and then they do the business license, and they do a module at a time. When we pay, when our software support bill is due July one for Tyler, the fourteen thousand. And we need that until we get, we can get transferred over.
Why would we have to do that?
If we get an issue, we, we're down. We are down.
Essentially, we'd be running both versions of software as one was getting put together and the other one was coming off. So, we'd be running some things on one and some things on another, and...
So we're paying while they're training?
While they're, while we're getting converted over, yes.
So we're paying for the support from both companies?
Yes, we, for time, yes, for six months.
So, and they don't do any type of proration of their fee, since you're only gonna do like one module, and then add another module, and then add another? They don't prorate it as you go up?
Tyler's the, you mean the new company or the Tyler? No.
The new company.
The new company, they start January, theirs runs from January, a calendar year for their software. Tyler runs from July one until June thirtieth.
Okay, but what I, what I'm thinking is that since you're, when you first start out with the new program, you're not going to have all the modules to begin with? That they're not prorating any of that fee until you're up to the full?
They give you three months free at the very beginning, if you start in four months.
Oh, they give you three months free, okay.
Yeah, theirs is not due till January one. I mean, for a calendar year.
Okay.
So if they would start, if this got approved, and they would start October, you'd get October, November, and then in January...
They do, and theirs is running on a calendar year, yes.
So we'd be paying six months, okay. Here's my problems. First of all, I think it's a good idea. You know, I've complained in the past about sending you and Kelly to Texas for training, that just seemed plum silly and, and that, you know? So I like the idea. What I don't understand is, how did this come about now instead of two months ago when we were doing budget work? Why weren't you people looking out? I mean, does, has this guy just suddenly dropped out of the sky, this Summit salesman, and said, here, try me? I mean, why are we, why are we again, having to find money for something that we should've just budgeted for two months ago? I don't understand how that happened.
They, they keep getting issues with us, with Ncode, or whatever it's called.
Well, in the conference that Katie and I just went to, their, their new thing now is version ten, version ten. And half the, I mean, a lot of the classes that Katie and I were, you know, would like to have gone to, you go in there and it's version ten. Version ten is a completely, is it not completely different, but it's a different format. That's what they're gonna, people, they're gonna start, they keep saying, we're gonna continue to support version nine, but all the classes that here are, are version ten. Well, version ten, there's a cost to version ten, so do you go with version ten and you're not completely satisfied with what you have? Or, do you start looking at some other options? Besides that, they had, I mean, they're growing continually. They're, the classes that, that we went to, they're getting, they're small, they're smaller and smaller. But they have new class, new programs designed for police departments, for tracking tran- public transportation. I mean, those are the things, doing things on iPads, tracking transportation on i- things that Brad would think is incredible.
So you went to a meeting and suddenly discovered this?
No.
No, she's talking about the Tyler meeting they went to and...
Driving them away from Tyler towards Summit, then they started looking at Summit, is the way I'm understanding it.
I don't think, I don't think that totally, I mean, I, that's what I found, when Katie and I went to this last conference. We were able to attend all of the classes that we wanted to, with the exception of one class that I got into was version ten.
When they first brought this to me, my first answer was, let's look at it next year at budget time. Then we started looking at, when the numbers got put together, with all the savings that's coming up, that maybe we should start saving six months ahead of time rather than waiting six months and saving. And that's why I sorta changed my mind, and I'm okay with doing it now because the, the sooner we get started, the sooner that savings kicks in.
So you understand my questions, because you had the same question?
Yes, I had the same question.
Are we doing this now? We just got done with the budget.
I, and I've known about Datatech for years. And it's always been very, a very small company, not, there's more, there was always more people on CMS and Ncode than there was on Datatech. Everybody I've ever talked to was happy with, with Datatech, but it was, it was always a smaller company. There was, there's like, like Leslie said, there was one person that was the, was the support person, and it was always concerned like, what if you need support? There's only that one person. I think in the last few years, they've really grown, and I was impressed with it.
And there is nothing to say that Tyler couldn't come and buy these and we'd be right back where, I mean, that's the way the business works, I don't know.
If Tyler, if Tyler was still out of Ames, and we could go to Ames and have our meetings, and you could go, I know where the office is for Ty- for CMS and Ames. I've been to their office, that's what Datatech is now, and that's, we're small enough that that's what we need.
And they were more responsive when they were in Ames, their needs.
So here's what, you got version ten, which is a software and that stuff in there, okay?
But we don't have that.
We don't have.
We don't have. But we got an IT guy back here.
It's completely, it's...
It's completely different, we can't use him, or he can't set up, or...
You'd have to purchase version ten.
And another IT guy?
No, no, it's software.
No, you'd have to purchase the software.
Purchase their use, and then they take care of their software.
When they...
By going from Vista to Windows Server.
Well, whatever.
Anyhow, then I have one other small problem, and, and that is you wanting to take ten thousand out of the general fund to pay for this. Totally against doing that. We just went through again a budget year where staff preached and preached how we needed more money in the general fund. Carried on till you got enough council people not to allow us to decrease taxes, five thousand dollars. But yet, we just quickly get to the end of the year and the numbers are higher as I told you they would be, and suddenly now you just want to spend ten thousand of it. I, I'm just against that. I'm not gonna vote for that part of it. I think that's wrong, I think that's, that, that lacks credibility from my staff members to so vehemently argue against a, a five-thousand-dollar reduction in the general fund, and then, when it's something they want, to suggest we steal ten thousand out of the general fund. That I think's wrong, period.
I think long-term it's gonna save you money, I mean...
I, I'm sure it will.
We can keep it where we have now.
I'm sure it will, but take the money somewhere else, don't take it out of the general fund. Don't you remember how you all sat here and preached how much trouble the general fund was in? We can't keep spending reserves to maintain the general fund. Oh my lord, we're going down the tubes, the city's gonna collapse.
But if it's a general, if it's a fu- it's of an expense that should come out of the general fund, it should come out of the general fund.
Take it out of somewhere else. Just like you say you're gonna do in future years. You're gonna take it out of water and sewer and...
Well, we can split it between water and sewer also. There's money in the capo...
There's other ways we can pay for that.
There's money in the capo equipment and our administration, we could take it out of...
I, I think it's a great idea and we ought to do it, I just don't like you taking the excess out of the general fund that I told you was gonna be there, and now to prove that it's not there in the future, you're gonna spend it so you can say, see, there's not extra money in the general fund.
Building permits are a hard thing to project mid-year, some years are high, some years are low.
And we knew they were going to be a lot higher this year. We knew it.
Would this be coming out this year's general fund or next year's?
The ten thou- we could take it out of the administrat- I mean, the capo equipment for administration. They were wanting ten thousand if, for this year for our down payment to get started on the contract signed. We could take it out next year, I could probably persuade them to take it out next year, it's so close.
Yeah, I can say, I think it's a great idea, we need to do it. I didn't like sending you girls all the way to Texas for training. This makes a lot more sense, I just, I just don't think we're correctly paying for it.
And also, they have the same training twice, so we can get all four people...
Great.
To the same, to the training, it...
Makes perfectly good sense to do this.
Well, we could split it between water, sewer, and, um, the capo equipment administration this year of this payment.
I, I would just like to, you know, I, it'd be more palatable to me if you could switch how you're paying for this.
Well, you certainly can do that.
Mayor, are you looking for a motion on this?
I hope you guys are ready.
I would make a motion that we, uh, purchase the Summit Software and pay for it, how she just mentioned down there.
Support.
Motion with support. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twelve is to consider appointing Judy McNeese as our library liaison. Dan is...
Motion to approve.
I think there's something illegal about that.
Support.
Support, yeah.
Motion with support.
Aye.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Motion carried. I want to thank you personally for doing this for the last four years, five years.
Oh, since we started...
Since we've had a library liaison.
Yep, one long meeting every month. Judy will love it.
Judy will love it. Lot of fun. All right, item number thirteen is to consider promoting Officer Richard Hand to lieutenant. There's yet, there's yes.
Oh, we need to...
So moved.
Yeah.
Support. Motion with support. Any discussion?
Only if these two gentlemen want to say something.
Well, we're not gonna let Frank tell.
I can, I, I can say something on even Frank's behalf and that stuff in there is that I know it was a hard decision on both of them because we got very good police officers that's in there, you know? And I'm glad for you, and, um, I appreciate for what Frank was going through.
Hey, Rick, well said.
Thank you.
Which is about the same thing I was gonna say, we have so much qualified members. Something that took me and I lost it obviously, but they're very close, all of them are very good. Just Officer Hand had more things of my weaknesses that I felt that I had, and then I also used some other people to help me make the decision. But, uh, it would've been easier to go outside and find some that I wouldn't have.
Anything, Alex?
No, I, I agree with Frank, we, we've got a, a great staff, and I was gonna talk about him a little bit in a little bit, but I just, uh, I know it was a hard decision for Frank to make, but he had the support of everybody, I think, that reviewed the resumes and that. Rich, I think he'll do a great job. He's had a lot of experience in city government, in volunteerism, he's been a chief of police, he's worked with budgets. And I, I think Frank would welcome somebody to work on his budget for him next year, so... I, I do think that they, I've always said Frank and I have offset each other, we, we have kind of different temperaments, and we balance each other, and I think with Rich, I think Rich would balance Frank out. And I think that's something you need as a chief and assistant chief, that, that balance makes things work a whole lot better, and I think you'll, you'll find that with Rich.
Really, there's a difference between you and Frank?
And, and just to add to it, I had the opportunity to, to look at the four resumes, and I, I think they're all great resumes, great individuals. And, you know, I told Frank it, it's his decision, and, you know, it really wasn't my decision to make or anybody. He's the one's gotta work with persons.
Yep, absolutely.
Some days you make some mad, some days you make everybody happy. Roll call.
Wes.
Aye.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Full-heartedly aye.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Don't rip his badge off yet. Item number fourteen is to consider purchase of gun mounts and locks for the police units. Amount of one-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars plus shipping.
Motion to approve.
Support. With support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Aye.
Raleigh.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Wes.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any old business, uh, anyone wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss tonight?
Yes, oh, go ahead, Gary. Go ahead, Gary.
No, Alex needs to end it.
I've got some questions regarding the, the earlier discussion regarding some pay raises for the chief, uh, fire chief. Uh, I think if that was eight percent, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, then, uh...
I think so too, Gary.
And then, another motion was made that you can increase the firefighter's pay to what?
Uh, two percent increase.
Okay, and yet we have, then when my question comes, are they still volunteer part, fire part, or are they paid part-time department?
Good question, ladies. They're considered employees.
Okay, and that's, that's what I want to know.
And they have been since what year?
Forever.
We still, we still call them volunteers, but that, that's neither here nor there. Then we have our police...
Gary, can I clarify that a little bit? Part of their salary is volunteering, because they're making less than the people that are swimming. Is the way I look at it.
That, that's no comparison whatsoever, yeah. And that's...
Okay, matter of opinion, go on, I'm hungry.
I'm really upset about that, though. My next question...
Okay, let's talk about it.
We will.
We call them...
If someone decides to talk to you about something, you walk away from it. So now, that's like, my other question goes to, is the chief gonna be a full-time citizen in our community?
Gary, I'm not gonna sit here and let you get asked that, I've never walked away from you.
Is the fire chief gonna be a full-time citizen in our community?
Well, I think he is.
He's a registered city and a person in the state of Iowa.
An Iowa ID, I'm a registered voter.
Yeah, registered voter, so why is your vehicle registered?
Because it's not my home base. I've done this, I've already gone through the requirements, it doesn't have to be because my home base is in Kansas City. My wife's there, my family's there, my income tax is filed through Kansas, and Iowa, and the federal. I'm on contract up here to work here. So I don't have to have Kansas City, I have to have an Iowa ID, and I can be a registered voter here. My kids don't go to school here, I have other than that, and I work sixty hours a week, so if I'm not dedicated to this place, you better come see me, because you and I'll go round and round big time.
Is that a threat to the community?
No, I'm just telling you, if you wanna go out...
I'm just asking some questions, and you don't need to be invading my...
I'm not.
But questions have been raised, and there's several people in the community that have that same question, and I'm the only one that's willing to come up and ask those questions. This has been a discussion within the community, either behind closed doors or whatever, that they are afraid to approach the council. And so therefore, that's why I'm asking these questions. To you as a council member to give this person eight percent raise. And then we have the reserve officers for the police department that get a dollar a year. I mean, they're just as much putting their life on the line as your fireman. To me, there's something wrong with this picture, and that's really all I have to say.
Let me address that with the reserve, I think that's state code, you know? That's state code, that, I mean, I'm gladly, I'm gladly paying more, but I mean, that's...
And that's why I wanted to ask the question about volunteer or fire chief, whether it's volunteer or part-time paid, or, uh, part-time paid employee on call type status, I understand.
They're considered... They're, they're considered employees in the city because we've got to provide workers' call and all that stuff.
Workers' call and all that.
So it's, you know, they're, they're, they call themselves volunteers, but I consider paid volunteers.
Exactly. And that's, that's what asks some of the people in the community. How can you be a volunteer when you are being paid? That isn't what volunteer is about.
That's, and you're correct. The definition of a volunteer is no pay. So, you know, and maybe we need to change that part of that.
And that, and that's, and that's the question that's been on a lot of people's minds in the community and that's why I'm asking the questions that I currently have.
But, but, you know, the other thing is, and, you know, it's out in the open, you know, Mike, his residence, his primary residence is still in Kansas, but yet he's right. He's contractual. He works for us. He lives up here. He goes home once a month or so, whatever, and, you know, comes back. But he, when he's gone, there's still somebody here to cover up that. I mean, he just, I don't expect somebody to be working point for hours a day.
Well, and I understand that. We're the same, we're the same. There are some citizens in this community that has those questions and they come, they don't want to come up here to council just for the simple fact, the way that I was approached by asking this question.
I admire you for doing it, but I think the ones that don't come up and do have those questions, I mean, they're-
So now, now that it's out, now that it's out in the open, maybe the Hawkeye and the radio station don't understand.
What was being hit?
The picture.
Gary, what was being hit? What did you uncover tonight that is being hit?
I didn't uncover anything. What?
You're acting like you did. Now that it's out in the open, you're quote, getting quoted.
The thing is, the citizens, they sit there and they get told the volunteer-
Anonymous blog subscribers, is that who you're talking about?
No. Do I talk to people in this community? Sure I do. There's people that have legitimate questions that when I bring up here to the council, not only do I get a hostile attitude from you, I get one from the fire chief. All I'm doing is hearing what they're saying.
You're standing, you're sitting there totally nice.
And you're bringing a situation between you and I that does have nothing to do with this, making some comments that has nothing to do. I have simple questions I want to ask and I ask. That upsets you. It upsets the chief. Alls I wanted to know from you what the status was of the firefighters, if they were paid or volunteer.
Okay, we've been through all that. Gary, you started the conversation by saying, "I'm ignoring you. I have returned your phone call every time you've called me, every time you've talked to me face to face, more so than any other city, any other citizen in the city." Now, what are you saying? "I walk away from you. I'm ignoring you." What are you talking about?
Well, I think there was a meeting one time you and I had in one place and you took off of me. You wouldn't want to finish the conversation. It had to do with the purchase of the firefighter. I had my views. I didn't get those expressed to you. So I felt like I was being, you had more important things to do than talk to citizens and, so therefore-
We had a meeting scheduled where we just passed each other a conversation.
You were talking.
Is it possible that I had a job or something to do with my family or, is it possible? If you called me up and said, "I want to sit down and have iced tea and talk about this", I beg people to do that. But if you're passing me on the street and you want to have a conversation with me, I don't want to do something.
This conversation that we're having right now, that's what turns off the citizens of this community and why they don't come up here, man. That, that's why they don't ask those questions because they're afraid of what the, what they're going to get treated like when they ask, or they have a problem that they don't get the respect that they deserve as citizens in the community.
Okay. You can come up here and say things about me, but I can't, honestly.
I didn't say anything. Alls I'm saying is that when you mentioned the, you know, about the swimming pool lifeguards that had nothing to do with what I was talking. And you let it out.
You put it in writing right here that the Giffords calling you a nuisance and-
No, I didn't say the ice ice was treated like a constant nuisance. And just like when I come up to talk to Dan, and you want to go back to that, that topic, which we've already discussed, just like when I come up and talk to Dan, that conversation, I said, "Here I am again. It's kind of like-"
Has he ever refused to talk to you?
A constant complaint. No, he hasn't.
But you're willing to put it in writing-
Yes, I am.
-that you're a constant nuisance.
Sometimes I feel like it because it's a problem.
Feelings are, you know, you put on your big boy pants, Gary.
Can you be quiet long enough so I can talk to you, Dan? When I come up here, I've talked about that problem that you're talking about for over six years about that album. And each time I come up here, I get ya, 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 and nothing happens. Or I get chastised by someone in the city because I brought this issue up. That wasn't part of the discussion that's supposed to be made out here. I just put that in there so you would know that, yes, I am constantly up here talking about. And if you get lip service from people and get ignored, then what are you supposed to proceed?
Did you get some satisfaction tonight so that we get the-
I'm hoping that the director would come down and take a look at it. That's all I asked, is someone to come and take a look at it. Randy took a look at it. Dan told me once, "Yeah, there's a problem, but there's a continuing problem." That's why I ended up talking to Teresa. That's why I talked to Dan again. And the thing is, nothing happens. Our Dan is put on the, the problem, but yet another problem pops up. There's something that's wrong. So that's all.
If you've got problems with streets or alleys or something like that, I'm supposed to be there. Just give me a call and I'll come up in contact and go through this chain of command and then we'll go ahead and do it.
I am.
All right. Is there anything else, really?
No, that's all I just wanted to address those issues that people have.
Thanks, Gary. Anyone else?
Just one thing, or a couple things.
Your turn, Alex.
Yeah. You challenged me today. You said the last one you listened to is half an hour. I think I can beat that, so. No, I just, this is my last council meeting. Linda and I'll be probably leaving about the twentieth and heading to Oklahoma there. I just, I started here nine years ago and I just want to pass along my thanks to all the people in the community who have been supportive to Linda and I and, and the, and the police department. I do, I want to thank the councils, past and present councils. We've never had an issue with the police department. When we needed something, the council has been there for us. They've been supportive. I've worked places where councils have been a little bit, had their own idea about law enforcement and wanted, thought they could run police departments and this council has let, let us run the department, given us suggestions and that, and we, I think we've been responsive to that. I want to thank the, the rest of the city's staff. You guys have a fantastic staff here, all the way around. They work hard for the city. They do a fantastic job. They all care about the city. There's nobody here that's out for themselves. They're all looking after, after the, the people in this community and I want to thank them. And I want to thank my staff at the police department. Start with Frank, who's, like I say, he's, he's kept me alive here. He's really, he's my expert on Iowa and coming from out of town. He's really been a lifesaver. And like I say, we do, I said earlier, we offset each other. We're have a little slightly different personalities and we've been a good balance for each other. And the rest of the staff, they've, they've done a fantastic job for us. I think they have the right attitude about the community. They're all community-minded. They're not overbearing when they deal with the public. I've always, my philosophy is you be fair to everybody. Good guy, bad guy, whoever, you treat them right, treat them with respect. And you'd be surprised how many times somebody gets, we, we had an incident the other day. We, we searched the back of a car, thought somebody might have put some dope in the back of the car. We didn't find any, but the guy told our guys, "You know, if I was in Chicago, there would have been dope in the back of that car." So, and I thought, even asking, "Are you serious?" And he said, "Oh, yeah." So, it just says that we have an excellent quality of officers. And, and speaking of the community, when we arrived here, Linda and I first got here, we, we would go different places. And it was kind of amazing because they would say, we, somehow they'd know we were from out of town and they would say, "Oh, well, welcome to Burlington." Almost to a person, they said that. And Linda and I kind of go, it's like a chamber of commerce set up for us and that. It's been, it was really amazing when we got here and they've, they've made us part of the community and we've, this has been our home. It's also, I've lived in this house. I'm living in Long Island, I've lived any place in my life. So this really has been kind of a, a home for us. And, and as we've told people, we, we're leaving. Linda's been in tears about the last five weeks of her saying goodbye to people. Everybody's been so nice and, and kind about it. So I just wanted to pass along my thanks to everybody, like I say, in this whole community. We appreciate everything everybody's done for us and we hope we've done a good job for you. And I really think the department's in good hands, the city's in good hands and with, with this council, they're in good hands. So I just wanted to say that and thank you for nine wonderful years. I said something before. I said that the next job's half as good as this job. It's really going to be a great job. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm looking forward to leaving, but this has been great and I want to thank you all for that. And that's what I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Eight minutes and twenty seconds.
Not quite that long.
Stop watch.
All righty. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. We got a pink heels-